Call of order. Sorry, sorry about that. The public hearing for January 19, 2016. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. There is no public hearing, so we're gonna move right into our regularly scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Ms. Louise, would you lead us in prayer? You've done it past.
Thank you for the day. Thank you for the challenges that we face and the strength that you give us to meet those challenges. Continue to show us your will. Bless this meeting tonight. May decisions be made that are for the betterment of our, this wonderful community. Pray these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
We invite all veterans and active-duty military. Ms. South, would you lead us in pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, do we have any council reports?
Couple of things. Just the president, along with his court, to the council, to the mayor, just trying to get to it. Just a couple of things, just unnecessary reports, a couple of comments, too. Just a couple of comments about the striping. I don't know if you guys have been hearing about the strapping around the roundabouts.
I kind of put some down.
Today, or?
I went through yesterday, brought my mom to hospital, went to that, they had a good line down.
Yeah, those, where you have the three, where you have the three lanes, they're very, very, very...
I've argued with them about that, and they didn't want to put the lines down because they're gonna come through with one more overlay. But the issue with that is the overlay, they cannot do it when it's cold, so they're waiting on a warm set of days. So, I'm like you, it'd be nice, and I press for them to do it during the holiday season because it would be a good thing for people to have a good experience through them and come back.
Right. And I think the worst one, Mr. Mayor, is when you're passing, when you're going towards the mall, passing the truck stops, when you begin into the middle lane, because there's the three options there, that middle lane is not identified. So, if you're in the far right, you're in up on the interstate, and there's really no direction as to getting in the middle lane to go around it. So, that's just one comment I was hearing today, I wanted to bring it up. And I just want to report, a good report on the after-school program. We're having a lot of success with the program, and just wanted to share this with the council because we had a real good, after the third nine weeks, we have one, we have two kids today that just got recognized at Westside Montessori as student of the month for the Montessori program. And if you listen to their, I had a chance to videotape their awards today, but in both cases, as Kathy LeBlanc said, that both of the kids started off not as good as they are now, they have made lots of progress, attitude, behavior, academics, and to the point where they were awarded the award for student of the month for their class. And particularly, one of the kids, I'm not gonna call his name, but he had, in his first semester, first nine weeks, he had a 1.3 GPA, the second, a 1.5, and this last six weeks grading period, he had a 3.167.
Wow.
So, he's gone from a 1.3 GPA to a 3.167 GPA in a matter of three grading periods. So, really excited about that, and I mean, I know you've been there, Mr. Mayor, several times, and there's a lot of success stories in the program, so appreciate the council's support on the after-school program.
Any other council reports? Mayor?
We had a beautiful day yesterday at Martin Luther King Park. Teen Parks and Grass did a great job setting it up, the fire department, had to fire a lot of trucks out there with the American flag displayed, and we had some officers walking around. So, it was a really good day in the park, tribute to Martin Luther King, enjoying the day out there. I'll keep it short today.
Do we have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Sure, we're gonna let you recognize yours in just a minute. All right, minutes, January 5th. If y'all have had an opportunity to review them, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, whole business, number one, a resolution to approve preliminary subdivision request by GCHP Hammond LLC for Phoenix Square Phase Two major subdivision, including approval of preliminary plat and construction plans by Clay Barlow PE dated November 30, 2015, KSUV 2015-10-00027, recommended with approval by condition, with conditions by planning commission.
The conditions, we're just wrapping up a few comments and making sure that all comments were addressed by all departments before it came here. They addressed all comments. It's, they're not doing it by ordinance because they're not binding it out so they can start selling immediately, and they have to finish construction before the final plat's filed. So, that's the reason this subdivision is going a little different route.
Council, have all your concerns been addressed?
No. Not all my concerns have been addressed. The conditions you were saying about the construction plans, what type of construction plans do we have? Are we using parish-wide?
You can't dictate what contractors that they use. That has nothing to do with me. All I'm concerned with is that they're building to the specs. Their soil cement underneath their asphalt is right, the depth of asphalt is right, they're using the right size sewer pipes, it's the right grades, it's built at the right elevations, but as far as who they choose to build, I get zero say-so in that.
And I still don't see the need.
You don't see the need for affordable housing?
No, not that I don't see the need for affordable housing, but I've just talked to Lamar, and I need to check for myself, but just a couple of months ago, Rich Smith wasn't even at capacity, right down the street. And so, I was, and I did have issues with the cost of the housing in the area that it is, is pricing out the people that live in that area.
As far as rentals, they'll be renting this.
These are all rentals.
I know. For 15 years with the option to go farther than 15?
Yeah, I would, I guess that's...
We negotiated, we renegotiated the deal that we had with them, and they paid $200,000 for the property, so they own the property now, and, you know, it's theirs to build and rent, if that's what they just so choose to do.
Agree, it's not donated correct anymore.
Any other questions?
I mean, I don't really have any questions, I just think that there's the whole thing that we were talking about a bit earlier, that we need to really think about in the future. You know, the whole, I think it's called a disadvantaged business enterprise, you know...
DBAs? But that's, that's not up for us to determine, I don't even, I'm not involved with the selection of a contractor.
I know, after the fact, you can't do anything about that. But I think one thing that we should think about as a council is how do we incorporate that concept in our bidding process in the future, something that's done...
But that's what I'm getting at, we don't bid, we're not involved with the bid on this at all. This isn't, the government, you know, City of Hammond isn't funding this, this is another entity. So, we would have to dip into now selecting contractors for businesses, and that's just not what governments and businesses are doing.
Basically, we're just selling, basically, we're just selling property, city property, to a developer to develop.
Correct.
Housing.
It would be like, you know, state to state.
And why that developer versus another one is always, because of that, the process was initially, they, there was no, no plan to sell the property, it was just to donate the property, right?
Right.
Right. So, the sale process happened after the fact.
Right, correct.
This is property that was for Workforce Housing, and when it was approved by the council, brought up by the mayor, it was intended for people to own their own homes. After the failure of this to happen, after, I think, four or five years, they renegotiated, and it was voted again in 2012 to extend the contract and change the terms. What did change was the fact that there was a sum of $200,000, which is fair and equitable assessment of the property, that really truly needed to be paid by state law. So, we talked to them again, and they cut a check to City Hammond for $200,000, which we cashed this past week, and now they're ready to move forward with their project, which was first approved in 2002, 2012, and now for them to be able to Gulf Coast to be able to rent it for 15 years and/or longer, or even sell housing.
But it's still under the same contract, the same, I guess, it's a TIF program through the, through the state that provides the funding?
Yeah, please leave one up.
TIF, yeah.
So, that's, that's still staying, it doesn't matter, even though you own the property now, you're, you're still under the same requirements to build and maintain and rent at a certain level?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
Tom Crumley, I'm with Gulf Coast Housing Partnership. Our office address is 1610 OC Haley in New Orleans, New Orleans, Louisiana.
Tom, please explain your agreement with LHC. And your tax credit.
Yeah, what we're building is an affordable house, 40 single-family houses that we are financing with low-income housing tax credits. Thirty-nine of the houses will be made available to people earning 60% or less of area median So, by definition, and don't hold me to this number, but that's roughly 30, people making $36,000 or below. We have a couple of other units that will be for permanent, two units that'll be permanent supportive housing, so people making up as little as 30% of area median income.
I believe the median income in Hammond, like $35,000. I mean, Manuel is like 53, am I right?
We're 60% of your area median income, so whatever that number is...
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand. The rents are set by Louisiana Housing. It will be affordable for a minimum of 15 years, that's the only way we could finance it.
Is it affordable based on the median income?
Yes, it's set, it's the state formula, the federal government, and then the State Housing Agency, Louisiana Housing Corp. It's Section 42, it's all regulated, we have nothing to do with the rents. It's set, it's mandated by law, you know, it's part of the, you know, low-income housing tax credits. It is, there was no way to finance it, all the financing fell through for for-sale homes way back when. There's been incorrect information that we've provided before, the houses are not unaffordable. We've heard rumors that those houses are trying to sell for $200,000. The fact of the matter is, the houses, the four we built originally, we were selling, they sold between $120,000 and $125,000, and took three years to sell them at that rate. The house, I don't know where this rumor or thought that they're unaffordable, that's just not correct. We have in place, and we're continuing on the, all of our actions are leading towards, if in fact there is a market at the end of this federal period of 15 years, if we can sell them as for-sale homes, we'd love to do that. That's why they're individually platted, that's why it's all set up this way. If and when there's a market to do that, we're happy to do it. The fact that we have cooperative endeavor agreement, and as the mayor said, we, we had thought we met the conditions, we went forth with the mayor, city attorney, we're fine, we've paid the full appraised value of the land, and we're still gonna spend, you know, $700,000 to put the infrastructure in there, and we're gonna save the trees, like we said we would. And, you know, we're doing everything we can in the spirit of what we signed up to do with you all in 2007, and now, there's just been no communication. I've reached out to the council, and for whatever reason, there's been no dialogue. So, something, you know, we're trying to do what we said we'd do. We're trying to do what the, we believe the intent of this cooperative endeavor agreement is, and we're trying to do what the state provided for the City of Hammond, as far as roughly $6 million of his low-income tax credits to do this thing. So, if I can answer any other questions?
I think, I'm glad you heard that, because I didn't know that, but just, and that's probably sometimes what our struggles are. I'm not against the project, I'm just, I just think that the language of medium income, because medium income in Hammond, and I looked it up a while back, it's like $30,000. So, if you're talking about 60%, you're talking about...
Eighteen thousand.
Nine dollars an hour, and $700 a month, a person making nine dollars an hour.
Less than that. Yeah, the rents will be, I think the net rent is $525.
So...
For brand-new...
Seven hundred, typically.
Five sixty.
Five sixty. It, they're beautiful, high-quality, hardy plank, well-designed, enterprise-green, designed, energy-efficient, nicely-designed homes.
You're saying 560 a month is gonna be the average rent?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
The, and the ones made available to both, the two units that are project-based vouchers are the supportive housing, excuse me, are made available to people making 30%. So, two of them, so there's two that are even...
Lower than that.
Lower than that. We're doing the sidewalks, we want to make it a Rich Smith, as of the time the market study was done, as of when we talked to them, and we talked to them about every other month, they are full with a waiting list. We're happy to call again tomorrow morning and confirm that they are still full with the waiting list there. So, if there's something else we need to do, we'd like to have it done in the light of day here, so we know what we're up against.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. South?
Yeah.
I'm on up, please. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, South DeKalosi, 101 East Hamid Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. The question that I have is, is it a 15-year lease, or is it the 15-year rent?
Compliance period.
I'm sorry?
According to the Section 42 rules, how we're financed, it is a 15-year compliance period. We will enter into year leases, just like every other standard lease, and we have to do that for 15 years. We have to report everybody that rents, that they qualify, their incomes, all the operating expenses, they're all audited, every, every lease is audited and compliance, and it's done every year.
Well, what about the, like, the maintenance and all that over the period of, say, 10 years?
We are the owner, we are the owner, just like everybody owning in this room, we are an owner, and we have to maintain, we're HUD, I mean, LHC comes and does inspections, the city, they're public streets, the city's gonna come and do inspections, and if we aren't, if we aren't just as good as every other citizen, I would sure expect we get a phone call that say, "Maintain it well." So, we, we will...
The Regis states that they have onsite management.
Yeah, onsite. So, if you have someone would rent it from you for three years, what happens when that individual moves out?
We rent it again.
We, we enter into one-year leases. Ladder and Bloom will be our property manager, and they will operate this the way that we operate the other 2,000 units we have, and if, when your lease comes within, you know, two months of expiring, they go through a process to check and make sure you're a good tenant, and if you want to stay, you stay, and if you're a bad tenant, we politely ask you to leave our property.
So, if I'm there for 15 years, then I have the option to purchase that building?
No. Whoever is in there at the end of the fifth, in the 15th year, and, you know, I'd say in today's world, it's pretty unusual that we'll have somebody stay and rent there for 15 years, but they could. So, who's ever there starting the 15th year and lasting through the 15th anniversary, then we go through a federally mandated, Louisiana Housing Corporation authorized procedure to turn it to for-sale homes. And so, whoever's in that unit in, from the, you know, in that 15th year, has a right to, to enter into being able to buy it if they can, you know, if everything, if the interest rates work and everything else 15 years from now works.
So, this is mainly a federal-funded project?
It is, it is funded by the private sector. PNC Bank is going to buy the $6.2 million worth of credits. Gulf Coast Housing Partnership is taking on the liability and recapture risk of repaying that, in addition to the $8 million construction loan, and we have $800,000 of permanent debt, all of which we, we, the private company, guarantee, and the credits are federal corporate credits.
Okay, so I'm in there 15 years. What happens to me after those 15 years, if I can't qualify to purchase that property?
You will be asked to leave. You'll be, if, if the world 15 years from now is such that we can sell those, and you're not in a position to, I, I can't answer the question.
Tom, can you continue to rent it?
We can continue to rent, we can continue to rent, or we can continue to sell. What happens at the end of 15 years, though, we are the landlord, we will be maintaining that whole approximate 10 acres. At the end of that period is when then we would re-subdivide into 40 individual parcels, get rid of the existing mortgage on the property, and go one by one by one on trying to find the individual homeowners. And if you're one of that, if you're there and qualified to buy, then, then you're welcome to stick around and buy.
So, do you have a purchase price after 15 years on that particular house?
No, we do not.
I think the market, Ms. South, I think the market, so here's, this council approved the initial agreement to provide them with the property to build affordable housing. That didn't work, the first three houses or four houses didn't sell. This council then amended that agreement to sell them that property, which they have, they have now purchased that property.
From the city?
We're out, we're, we're basically out now. They're gonna be managed by the federal government and by Louisiana Housing Association or Corporation, as far as how they participate in those tax credits. So, from the city and the council, and Andre, please correct me in a minute if I'm not correct, we're pretty much out. They're gonna be managed by the state and by the federal government, and if they don't do everything they're supposed to do, I guess they risk losing their credits. This is like Rich Smith, which is a very good development, very clean, very...
Oakwood Estates is also another one.
Yeah.
The only one that's really been a failure, in my opinion, is Woodville.
Yeah.
Which is outside of City of Hammond.
So, you understand, we're, we're at a point now where they're asking for us to approve these plans, and if they've met all the requirements, we pretty much, we don't have to...
I only have one other question I want to ask you, if this is okay. How do we just confirm, just, just for the sake of record-keeping, because, you know, I think the 540 a month rental is, is where we need to be to help some of our families get into nice places to stay, or nicer places to stay. How do we confirm that that is the case? Because I know in some of the other units, like Regis Estates, sometimes the rent is as high as 650. Now, I guess, let me ask this question, does it have any, is it, is it also income-based as well, or is it, so is it income-based by individual person moving in?
Yes, it's both. First, you have to income-qualify.
Okay.
Check your income, if you're married, single, if you're a family of four, whatever.
It can be higher than that.
You have to income-qualify, and we have the, we have maximum rents that we're allowed to charge, so we can't go above the maximum...
What's the maximum rent? That's what I wanted to know.
The way it works, do you remember?
I think it's 560.
The way it works is there's a maximum rent, less a mandated local utility allowance. I'm gonna make this up because I don't know the, and I want, let's say the maximum rent is 600. They state, because of what's out around here, that the utility allowance for, for a three-bedroom unit is 80 bucks a month. So, the maximum we can charge a tenant is 600, the maximum rent, less the utility, let's say it's 80, so 520 would be the maximum we can charge. And that is audited every year through Louisiana Housing Corp., and we're, all that's public record, we can share all that, and I think...
I would like to, like to have, if you don't mind, maybe at some point, I'd like to see that information, just for the record, just for my record.
We'd be happy to share it with you. Again, we're audited, PNC's audited, and I think it's all available on LHC's website, so we're happy to do that.
Okay.
Let me say this, the developer still has to meet all other requirements of the city, as any other subdivision developer, monster, and building developer. Also, the cooperative endeavor agreement does require them to maintain books and records of the project, and it does allow the city to audit those records. So, there is certainly, I know it's a willingness to share information, but we also have the right to require that information be provided.
So, it's under 40, it's 40 units you're...
Forty-four.
Forty-four units?
Well, the, the subdivision, because of the other ones, there is a total of 44, four of which really are out of the footprint today because they've already been sold. The one, one unit is not low-income housing tax credit encumbered, because we wanted the four on the, right at the, facing, facing Phoenix Square, right at J.W.D. Davis, those will all be the same, those will be unencumbered. So, there's technically 39 other ones that are all encumbered by the low-income housing tax credits.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good discussion. All right. Does anyone have any other questions for Josh? Any, any more public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, new business, number one, a resolution to approve Iron Horse Sports Grill and Spirits located at 123 South Kate Street, to obtain a permit to sell high, low alcohol, on the condition that all inspections are done and the approval by the appropriate departments before the alcohol permit is issued. The Ondrej Banjo South LLC, Ms. Jenny.
Good afternoon, council people. I am here this afternoon to ask for approval for alcohol for a new restaurant. Now, I do know that we have put on the agenda that it's conditional, but as of today, we have met our conditionals. We had two left to get, and by 4 o'clock this afternoon, I had all my signatures. So, the two that we were waiting on has now been completed, so it is actually not hinging on the condition of those inspections, they have been met. All other qualifications have also been met, according to the ordinances and the applications, everything is in order, and we are asking that they be approved tonight. We do have a representative here tonight, it's not the owner, but we have a representative for the business to come before you. So, if you have any questions, I'll invite him to come up now, and let y'all ask your questions, if you have some, okay?
My name is Joey Shalacy, and I am the designer and project manager for this project. It is actually owned by my kids and they're business partners, I'm just kinda overseeing the project from start to finish. So, if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer them for y'all.
What's your address, Joey?
One, the business address?
That's, just something for the record.
123 South Kate Street.
All right.
It's on the corner of Kate and Morris, right next to Music Express.
Joey, we kinda put everybody on notice, comes for a permit, for an alcohol permit, so I'm gonna read a statement, and then we get to vote. City of Hammond prohibits the sale of alcohol to persons under the age of 21, and those laws are strictly enforced. If you are anyone working, I'm sorry. Joey, don't make me gavel you down.
He's retired, he's retired, yeah, you know.
He's got nothing to do. If you're in violation of these laws or any other applicable, the sale of alcohol, your permit may be revoked. And for restaurants, approval for sale of alcohol by a restaurant is subject to the ratio of food alcohol sales, 60/40, and it's not approval for a restaurant to shut down at a certain hour and become a bar. You can only serve alcohol in conjunction with the service of food. Your restaurant is expected to serve food during all times of operation, from open to close. If you're in violation of these requirements or near the law, your alcohol permit may be revoked. in violation of the law, your alcohol permit may be revoked. So can you pass that along to whoever's going to manage the business?
I sure will. And they're aware of, of these laws and rules. I've, I've done this for a long time.
So any questions for Joey? I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck. When are you opening?
We're opening February, Monday, February the 1st. We will probably, probably be ready probably the end of this week, the first of next week. But I want to give my staff or my kids' staff, you know, I've kind of helped them through this whole project, the hiring process, everything. I'm just kind of like on my way, on my way out of business and trying to help them get started in the business. And the gentleman that's running our kitchen, our executive chef, or our chef, head cook, whatever you want to call it, has been a lifelong friend of mine. I hired him in 2002 when I opened Wall Street in Mandeville. For those of you that are not familiar with Wall Street, Tommy's on Thomas. I designed and built that in 1992. It was called Wall Street. I sold it. It's now Tommy's on Thomas, just like Topla I did in 1997, which was called Jordan's on Kate after my son, which I sold to Sam Taylor. That became Topla. And it's, well, actually, both businesses are still there, doing very well in Hammond. But Chad came with me because I opened up Wall Street in Mandeville in 2003. Chad was the kitchen manager for 13 years at The Chimes on the gates of LSU, which is, most of you have heard of that or been there. He's very, been very successful. He's very knowledgeable. And what their concept there is, is similar to, you know, Brady's, which does a great job, Mariners, which does a great job, all the, the restaurants in downtown Hammond. But what we, what we have done is we have taken all their menus and my advice to my, my children was, let's do 90% of what they do, but let's do something different. So really, the only crossover on our, our menu and their menu is about 10% of the items, which is mainly two or three items. So the majority of the things you'll eat when you go in Iron Horse, they don't serve anywhere else in downtown Hammond. And the concept was to be different, not to be like everybody else. And if it's good and it's affordable, which it is, and you like it, then you got to come back because nobody else is really serving it. And one of the, you know...
You're making, you're making me hungry.
One of the main things that, that we wanted, that I, I advised them to do was to create a concept in downtown Hammond that nobody else had. So we designed a sports grill. It's, it's not a bar. It's, and you'll see when you come in there, it's a, a full-service restaurant that has a bar in it. There's about 25 TVs in there. There's a 30-foot, 24-pixel, fully graphic, foot-high, moving sports ticker like you would see in the center of stadiums or if you see in casinos or in Wall Street. It's, it's very, very attractive and it's very different. And it's...
I can tell you're excited.
Well, it's really unique to down, I mean, I've done a lot of things in downtown Hammond, but it's, it's really unique. And when you come in here, you, I mean, when you go in there, you're going to say, wow, this is really different. It's nice. And it's, it's a great location on the corner. And we designed, designed the front to where we can open the windows like being in the French Quarter. So if you, you know, a lot, a lot of people go to Locareta, which Sal's a great friend of mine. They do a great job. You sit outside, but I've seen people sitting outside eating and sweat running off their face. And I'm shaking my head at them like, y'all are a bunch of dummies. Well, and here, we can give you basically the same concept, feel like you eating outside, opening all the windows, but we can control the thermostat and kind of have, have it a little bit more comfortable for you. But I, I, I think it'll be a, a great addition to downtown Hammond. I appreciate y'all giving them the opportunity, Pete, the opportunity for them to do this. And I think, I don't think anybody's going to be disappointed.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Number two, a resolution to approve the Hammond Blues and Barbecue Challenge Incorporated to hold the 2016 It's a Smoke and Blues Barbecue Challenge in downtown Hammond on March 25th, 26th, 2016, within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street and Hampton Street and Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue.
Eric?
How y'all doing? This is our 13th year and it's going strong and so excited. We added some things this past year. We have Pro Start from Hammond High in Springfield coming in and we do our own vending now. This year, just happens, Easter's very early this year. It falls on Easter weekend. So what we're going to do, we will get Pro Start and for Springfield and Hammond High, we're going to pre-sell pork butts and whole racks of ribs. Even if you want some beans, barbecue beans, we're going to pre-sell that so you have a nice Easter dinner the next day. But that's some, one of the new things we're having. The, the backyard is still going all the way down to the trees, into the trees. We're having some more vendors come in and it, it's just, everybody's excited about it. Even after 13 years, we're still going strong.
It's a great event. Make a motion to approve. Second. Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number three, a resolution to approve the Hammond Blues and Barbecue Challenge Incorporated to sell beer and alcoholic beverages, specifically daiquiris on the city's property line within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards of South Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hampton Street and Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue for the hours of 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday, March 25th, 2016, and from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Saturday, March 26th, 2016.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to approve the Hammond Blues and Barbecue Challenge to get a waiver of the city of Hammond's open containment law within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hampton Street and Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue for the hours of 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday, March 25th, 2016, and from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Saturday, March 26th, 2016.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, we're going to, it's going to be in the Daily Star. Hopefully, we're going to start advertising for the pre-sales. So when y'all are ready to order, we, we're hopefully selling about 80 to 100 butts. So we'll have that going. Thank y'all.
Number five, resolution one, approving the submission of $25,000, I guess I should say, of Echo Connections from the ground-up grant application to landscape, I-12, US-51 Business, top of Railroad Avenue Roundabouts. Two, agreeing to a cash in-kind match of $25,000. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. Charles?
Thank you. This one's pretty self-explanatory. We're applying for a $25,000 grant to landscape the roundabouts. This could include trees, shrubs, flowers, ground cover. There've been a couple of designs that you guys may have seen, what, what the roundabouts could look like. We're trying to turn it into a gateway to Hammond, something that motorists in particular in I-12, when they see this area, won't just drive by. They'll be encouraged to get off and see what Hammond's all about. The $25,000 match, it's a combination of cash and in-kind as required by the grantor. We're actually hoping that we may be able to use some other grant funds that we've applied for, assuming we get those to, to make the match. Of course, we have city workers and whatnot that can contribute in-kind. And then we've got grant match funds as well. So this is the same grantor that we received a grant from to do the trees along Morrison Boulevard. We've planted about 250 trees so far. So we're looking to do it again.
Make a motion to approve? Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
There are no final orders of ordinance. So introduction to ordinance, Sub-Officer Karen, introduction to amend an ord, an ordinance to amend the city, the code of ordinances regarding meetings of the city council. That has my name by it. I will, due to a little history, Council Marshal asked at the last meeting that we consider moving our meetings from the first and third Tuesday to the second and fourth Tuesday so as not conflict with the school board meetings. As he pointed out, next year is a very big year for Hammond Public Schools and it would give us an opportunity to participate in school board meetings if we so choose. So I've asked Andre to research that. Andre, you have anything you want to add?
No, sir. It also memorializes the practice of the council, and that is to start your meetings at the end of the public hearing. And also, in the event a holiday falls on the council day, the council president can just pick a day of that week that makes most sense for everybody to reschedule. So we're just, those two little tweaks to it also.
One little input, I don't have a problem with it. Andre, I just noticed in the charter it talks about, which I've, we've never done this before, about we, we should adopt meeting dates by resolution within 30 days of assuming office.
Right.
I've never done that since I've been on the council. That won't cause a problem with this, would it?
No, sir. I think would, would actually, there's an existing ordinance of the council. So that would, that ordinance satisfies the requirements of the charter. So all you're doing is commending that ordinance.
Okay. I just didn't want to make sure you didn't do anything.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Item number two...
Just one thing, Mr. President. If that passes, then that would mean that we would, we would like to have the Wilbert L. Dangerfield, one of the excellence, the last Tuesday of the month of February. That be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Item number two, introduction of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding skating and the use of skateboards and similar devices. Councilman Hood?
If you, if you guys remember, we all received an email from a skateboarder voicing his displeasure. He was not allowed to skateboard on the sidewalk. After a little research, found out you can do a lot of things on the sidewalk, ride bikes, such, but you cannot ride a skateboard. So we did, I was with Andre and Patrick, and we're looking to amend the ordinance that would allow skateboarders outside of the bounds of the historic district because the historic district has the majority of the pedestrian traffic, which they would still be required to always give the right-of-way to pedestrians if they are riding on a skateboard. So I circulated this around. I didn't get any opposition or input, so therefore bringing it up for introduction. Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter-Bier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, could we amend the agenda to add the, for the fire truck?
Well, I've spoken to Andre and, I'm sorry, should have reported on that. The mayor's going to administratively pull that off the list and then we'll come back at a later meeting date and unsurplus it will be the first step. And then we will, I guess, once we unsurplus it, we won't take any other action.
And we don't have to, we don't have to do an ordinance to, to unsurplus it?
That's what we just talked about the next...
Okay, so we have to introduce the ordinance.
But the mayor can pull it administratively to make sure it doesn't get sold. So then, then we can, we can unsurpluses it and decide how we move forward from there.
And just one last question. I'll be done. For the next, when we, when we introduce the ordinance and talk about the skate, skating on the sidewalks, I just want to know if you could do the research between now and then as to the potential, do we assume any liability for sidewalks to be in condition for skateboarding if we allow skateboarding on the sidewalks? So we won't be liable at all?
No, you're not increasing any liability.
Okay, good. That's good.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Motion to adjourn?
What should we do here?
All right.
All right.
All right.